July 24, 2024. Staff, will you lead us in the pledge of leagists?
Sure.
We did.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
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 Mr. Richard? And Mr. Serena?
Yeah. Moving on to the report of the chair. Really don't have a lot today, but I think as we get into the swing of, it's the end of July. We get, and obviously August, we're getting back in the swing of getting back to school. We have, Superintendent, you're going to talk about the new administrators also?
Yep, we got a couple of new administrators since the last meeting.
I just wish the new administrators well. But I think as we get back in the swing of the schools and everything, I think, as we always talk about, it's good for the community to work with us to come to these meetings. We see people here all the time, and it's great. And I think we'd love to see you more at the meetings as we get into the school year. I think we're making a lot of positive changes. And if you see those and you have questions, we're always around. We're very visible, and you can speak to us. If you think things need to be changed, that's why we're here. So that's really all I have. And I just want to wish everyone the rest of the summer, enjoy the rest of the summer, because it goes fast. Does anyone have anything? Move on to the report, Superintendent.
We do have a handful of new administrative positions, some that I've mentioned before, and I'll just say them again. We have new associate principals at the complex. The Dave Maikou is stepping up from assistant to associate. Dr. Carlos Scazarella is our new associate principal of the high school. Michelle Dwyer, somebody who was a dean at the middle school, is now going to be an assistant principal. We have a new assistant principal at the Belmonte Steam Academy. She's here tonight, Heidi Jimenez. And we have a new athletic director, a longtime Saugus resident, a lifetime Saugus resident. Matt Serino is our new athletic director. So they're all in place and have been in place for the last couple of weeks. And then they're hitting the ground running. And I think it's a tremendous new team that we've got assembled for the upcoming year. Over the last few weeks since we last met, I attended the state superintendent's conference, which we, I did get to realize that we are, there's problems that we're experiences in the community are not unique. If anything, in a lot of areas, we're ahead of the game. I think when we're talking about the curriculum adoption plans that came out of COVID, that was a huge plus for us. And we're actually ahead of a lot of districts. But it was, it was, it was a good time to network with some of the superintendents to get a feel for where we are in the, in the greater scheme of things. I also met with the, I've been meeting with the principals and the central office staff, working on goals for next year and some of what we have to focus on for next year. I met with the officers of the SBC just today to talk about some of the plans for next year and some of the things that we can do moving forward. I met with the athletic director to talk about the upcoming season and the age-old push for the banners. And he's well on his way to moving those banners along and talked about the Hall of Fame and moving forward with that. We, I have hired enrichment coordinators for the high school, middle school, and the Belmonte so far. So we'll have, they, we met, I met with the three of them Monday or Tuesday. I can't remember which day it was, probably Monday. Met with them to discuss how we're going to schedule it, how they're going to get it filled. We posted for the positions of enrichment instructors. So we're well on our way to having that enrichment program up and running for like, I think it's going to be the second or third week in September. And again, the sessions for the enrichment program are going to pretty much follow what we've talked about. And that is, there'll be four sessions, a six-week session in the fall, a six-week session in the late fall, early winter, a six-week session in the winter, end of the spring, and a six-week session in the later spring. And that way, it's the pilot program that we ran here just amped up to two days a week, six weeks recurring, as many options as we can come up with. And there was a great discussion, a meeting with them again next week to see where they are, what they need, what they're talking about scheduling, how they want to deal with marketing, promoting it. Now promoting it in my community newsletter. They're working on getting it staffed and programs in place so that they can, at the beginning of the school year, articulate to the families what offerings they'll have for session one to give families a chance to sign up for it. And they'll do a sign up like they did here where they give their first, you know, first, second, third choice and hopefully be able to get every student that wants it, one of their top three choices. And then if they don't get their choice the first time and it's a highly sought-after program, we're going to have four sessions of it. So they'll, they'll get a chance at some point during the year. So we're very excited about that.
With that said, we're going to lean heavy on academics on those, correct?
Yeah, academics and what I would call academic adjacent programs. That would be programs like a robotics program, which, which at first sight wouldn't seem 100% academic, but is giving strategies and team-building skills. Book clubs, which aren't necessarily academic, but promote reading and literacy. So yeah, that type of thing. I've, I've also posted and had posted the new positions that we got with the budget for ELL, sped, and counseling. So those have been posted on School Spring, so those jobs are now available. The new one, and I met with the Alumni Association so that they can move forward to use the complex now, moving forward. The Saugus High Alumni Association is now going to make their home for their meetings and their events at the Saugus High, Middle High School complex.
Oh, that's great.
The other thing that I worked on today and I will be sharing with you this week is, the chair did mention that our meetings will go to two a month, starting in August. We will go to second and fourth Tuesday of the month. So what I'm going to be doing is strike that Thursday, my bad, Thursday. Good catch, I heard it. Yeah, the second and fourth Thursday of the month. Yep. So yeah, don't cross anything out, I was wrong. And the, the only two months with that will get a little bit, will be a little bit off is November. There's only going to be the first, sorry, the second Thursday of the month because the fourth is Thanksgiving. And December will go to first and third to avoid the holidays on that. Not only am I doing that, and I haven't finished or come near finishing it, is what I want to do and what I've talked about with the chair is, I want to make sure that not only do I have people coming in for it, I'm also going to schedule each meeting with invitees. So I'm going to be inviting the executive director of special ed, curriculum, principals, athletics, try to get the student and class officers in here, the enrichment coordinators in here for, on a set schedule, which I will be sharing with you once I get that done. And I'll probably, and that's sort of what I'm waiting for to do, and I'll finish it tomorrow. I'll have that all laid out for you, just a draft. And you can look at it and see what I'm talking about. I will still bring people in under my report if need strikes us last minute type of thing. A youth group wins a state title, we want to recognize them. But we will have stuff that is hard scheduled where administrators will bring in students to showcase their achievements and their work.
The other thing too is I just want to let the committee know if there's someone that you would like to see at the meeting and stuff, please bring it up.
If there's, like, if there's a focus area you'd like to see also mentioned, that's easy enough to do. And let me just check, I think that's all I had on my report.
And for the, for the dates of the meetings, those can get updated on the website, just so parents?
Yep, I, yeah, I just, yeah, it's, it's, so it's the, I'll say it, I'll try to say it right this time. It is the second and fourth Thursday of each month. With the exception of November will only be the second. And December will be the first and third instead to avoid the Holocaust. I didn't, 6:00 PM, sorry, yeah, sorry. I heard something, I couldn't hear it. Thank you.
I didn't hear who said it.
No, no, I didn't hear, I heard something, but that's all I have.
Excellent. So we're going to move on to the report of subcommittees. We do have one report from the policy subcommittee. We did meet today, some discussions on things we'd like to see in the policy realm. I think one of them was, we discussed the dress code at the complex, the middle high school. We need to do some tweaking there. I think it's kind of vague right now, and I don't think, I don't think it carries any weight because it's so vague. So that's something that I think we need to take a look at. I believe we have that meeting on the 14th. Also, looking at some other stuff, you know. 12, yeah, definitely the 12, that's what I'm thinking. I hope it's on an even day at least.
12, first, the third, the second.
So we'll be meeting on the 12th at?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. So as we go through these, if there's any questions, that's obviously an open meeting. Anyone can attend, so we'd like to look at that. Secondly is, I reached out, me and Mr. Hashem, Superintendent Hashem, talked about updating our policies, right? We, a lot of the policies are old, they've been, they haven't been updated in a while. And we may not use them for 10 years. But I reached out to Massachusetts Association of School Committees and talked to Alicia, Alicia Mellon about what it would take to update these. And so she sent me back a proposal. What they would do is they would update the school committee policy manual. So those are, it's not school-specific or district-specific policies. It's just basically would update us and put us in line with the mass general law policies. So they would take that and update that. They would take all of master contracts, all the bargaining union contracts and everything, go through those and update those, take out some, there's some tweaks and there's some things in there that might not need to be in there. They would also do a system-wide handbook for principals, teachers, and students. They would update all our current documents, handbooks to cover the following: organizational charts, school transportation, purchasing, staff evaluation, emergency operating plan, school calendar, and the use of school facilities and field trip, and other documents that are needed. So I think this is a really good value. It's, the cost to the district is $9,999, and that's paid over three years. So our cost is $3,333 a year. I think there's a lot of value to this because it, what it does is it, it brings us up to where we should be. And it doesn't take the district's time, it doesn't take time from the administrators to update this stuff. This is a, this is a big undertaking, this is a three-year project. So we looked at that, we voted to move it to this committee. I would like to ask if there's any questions, I would like to try to vote on it.
The question I had was, when you talked about the bargaining contracts, that's, they would get us information if we were in collective bargaining and we wanted data?
No, that's a, I'm sorry, that's a different thing.
What they would do is they would take our contracts and say, this language in here does not belong in this contract. Because there's some of those contracts out there that maybe we kept some language in that someone needed 10 years ago and is still in there.
Well, it would be a recommendation because obviously the?
It's a recommendation, yes.
That was what I was getting, yeah. Because obviously these are negotiated contracts. But they recommend, hey, you might want to take this out, you might want to?
Correct. So they would align us really as a standard operating contract for the collective bargaining agreements. And what I think what you see is happening is the unions are using, they're using to do the same thing we're asking these guys to do.
Right. I just wanted to understand, it was a recommendation?
Yeah, it's a recommendation as far as the contracts, the policies would be the policies. And we, like I said, it's a three-year process, so it'd be going back and forth. So there'd be a lot of time that we put into it, but not the time that these guys would put into it. So I don't know if there's any questions on that. If possible, I'd like to vote tonight.
Yeah, Mr. I'd make a motion to approve.
The chair will second. Can we do a roll on that?
Yes. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, moving on to old business, we need to correct our budget number. I don't know if you guys look at the budget that we get, is the bottom numbers always in bold? Well, the bottom number is the number we ask for. It's not the number that I approved. So we, we put in what we asked, what we asked for. Unfortunately, that's not the number we're getting. So we just need to correct that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the, that the committee reaffirms that our budget amount for FY '25 is $33,768,535.
Chair seconds, can we do a roll on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercola?
Yes.
A yes. Next movement on the new business, we'll have a presentation, discussion, and a vote on the student handbooks, both elementary and the secondary school handbooks. I think we have some administrators here that?
You want to go first?
Yeah, sure. They're usually the quickest, so.
Good evening. Bernard Sullivan, principal of Saugus Middle High School. So we presented to you the updated Saugus Middle High School handbook for the 2024-2025 school year. I want to start out by, I know Mr. Hashem just did it, but I want to start out by introducing Dr. Carlos Scazarella, who is the new associate principal for Saugus High School. And over the, she started on July 1st. And over the last several weeks, she has really been instrumental in some of these changes that I'm talking about in the handbook today. Most of what you see in the handbook, most of the changes we made are reorganization. We're not coming asking for big changes in like how grades are calculated or eligibility or anything like we have in the last few years. Really a push this year to reorganize the handbook to really make it much more user-friendly and accessible to students and to families and to everyone who uses it. And Dr. Scazarella has really been instrumental in reorganizing the handbook. I think her expertise in the area and coming in with, you know, fresh eyes. You know, some of us who've been using this handbook for so long, you know where things are, so you can turn to them instinctively. And you kind of forget that maybe for someone who's seeing it for the first time, the flow, the layout, doesn't make as much sense. So I really want to thank her for all of her hard work in the last several weeks. She really jumped right in and did a great job. So as I said, most of what you're seeing in here are organizational changes in terms of the layout and organization of the handbook to make it more usable. As was just acknowledged a few minutes ago, we know Mr. Hashem and the policy subcommittee are hard at work looking at different policies, potentially revising different policies. And so we will, you know, when policies are updated, either individually or if there's a large group of them at once, we'll amend our handbook to reflect the changes in the policy and we'll notify our students, parents, and caregivers about those changes in real time as they go into effect. So those, you know, fall under policy and will change as they go. So there's not too many really substantive changes in the handbook. As I said, we wanted the handbook to be much more user-friendly. We want it to be something that students and families could really find the information that they were looking for. And we wanted to do a lot more work in reducing some redundancy that we found in the handbook. This handbook had been the merger of the middle and high school handbooks a few years ago. And a lot of work was done to merge them. And now, you know, more work has been done to clean them up and make them more user-friendly. So I submitted to Mr. Hashem at the start of the week to go along with this just a kind of bullet points of some of the big organizational or different changes that you might see in there. You see the table of contents right at the beginning that highlights several of the sections have been reorganized to make them flow a little bit better, easier to use. Not every single item that's in the handbook is listed on the table of contents. But we did try to make sure that the big things that you'd be looking for, we tell you where to find them. And we try and group things a little bit more logically. Added a lot more detail in there regarding activities and athletics. We're making a big push to try and get all of our students, 6 through 12, involved in extracurricular activities and athletics. And so highlighting what those were, you know, highlighting what the offerings are. We made a note in there about all of the work that we're doing. And so there'll be more, particularly in the middle school area. We added some language. Again, we worked on reducing redundancy, but when it came to the chemical health policy, you'll see that it's in there twice in two different places. We just wanted to make it clear in the handbook that it's not that athletes are held to this high standard in National Honor Society kids and then everyone else who does an extracurricular activity. It's, it's not the same. No, if you're involved in extracurricular activities, we have a chemical health policy. And if you violate it, you're subject to both in-school discipline, depending on when the infraction occurred, and consequences in the extracurricular. So we did try and clarify that for students so that you know, you know, if something happens and you're involved in, say, the drama production, it can affect your ability to be in the drama production. Just as if you are on a, you know, lacrosse or baseball team, it could affect your eligibility to play there. So that's not a policy change, we just tried to clarify. So you'll see language highlighted throughout that might be added in which we tried to clarify for students and family what the intention is or what is being said in that, that area. We added some language around homework to really try and strengthen and remind families and students about the importance of homework. We're going to be making a push on homework in the middle high school this year. So we wanted the language to align. One of the big changes in the back of the old handbook for the last several years, you had the discipline kind of consequence, like the discipline infraction and consequence model. And it was listed twice. It was the same basic information, but listed in two different formats. So it was redundant and it also got confusing. You'd be trying to refer people to something and they'd be looking at something that looks similar, different setup. So we went through, made sure it was aligned, picked one format for listing it, added some language to clarify, added some things into the discipline code to align with what you see in the modern day, you know, language around the use of AI in part of the plagiarism policy. You know, when we talk about forgeries, we stress the fact and put it explicit in there that getting a, creating a fake email to try and write yourself a dismissal note is considered forgery by the handbook and would be treated the same as if you forged a dismissal note in the old days. But as I said, most of it's reorganization, reducing redundancy and clarity, not really asking for, you know, substantial changes to specific parts of it. Especially since we know the policy subcommittee is doing a lot of work in that regard and we don't want to, you know, have conflicting groups working on the same thing.
This is, this is really good.
Yeah, it came out really nice.
Yeah, no, I think, like I said earlier, I think the dress code, that's something we need to fix.
Yeah, and that's policy, that's policy sub. So if there's any changes to the dress code, we'll update the handbook and then we'll message out to families.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, I think it looks great.
It's great. I would commend both you and Dr. Scazarella, great job.
All right, thank you. And it's really, I mean, it's, it's really a testament to Dr. Scazarella. She came in, we were talking about handbook, she said, let me take a look. She came back a couple of days later and she, she had really just jumped into it and was making changes. And we said, you know, go for it. And she really put together something that is, I think, incredibly student and family-friendly. You know, I was talking, we were talking with Mr. Hashem, I think on Monday. We know some questions had come up. And there's some things in there, they're not new policies. But because of how the handbook had been structured, they were maybe buried in the back. And now we're putting them up forefront, you know, which helps because they're going to be points of emphasis for us, you know, like things like IDs. We want to stress on the IDs, we moved that up forward. And I also think she really did a very nice job of moving a lot to the beginning around general expectations and mission and vision. So it really is nice. And then the longer policies got moved to the back. And you'll see, we kind of shortened some of them and put in the language. You can get the full policy at the website. Because people might get lost in these long policies trying to find what they're looking for. So I think it came out really nice. And again, we'll go into the year with our, you know, points of emphasis and really strive on consistent implementation.
Yeah, I think that's my concern, right, is the implementation. And I think just getting out the policies that are new?
I'm just going to get my water.
Yeah, that's okay. Like the policies, like the IDs and the things that, you know. I just want the students, the parents to know, listen, past practice is past, this is not going to happen. This is moving forward, this is the way it's going to be. Same with everything else. And because like I said, just looking at some of this stuff, it's really updated. I looked at the cell phone policy, it's great. You know, it's just got to be implemented, right? And I think, I think that's, at the end of the day, I think, you know, it flows downhill. It's from Mike to you, to the teachers. And I think that's, you know, that's where the people that sit up here, that's, I think, one of our concerns, right? Is that the year starts off and everything's good. Two months in, no one's wearing the IDs, phones are out, you know what I'm saying?
And certain things, you know, IDs, we have a new, we switched to a new photography company. It's our second year with them. So IDs at the start of the year, you know, where you're trying to get, get everyone on an ID that takes some time. But once we have everyone with IDs, we get our sixth graders with IDs, you know, sticking on it. But, you know, as Mr. Hashem said, we have a reorganized administrative team. We have several new faces or people have been around for a little bit of time in new positions. Very exciting at the middle high school. I think it's a really, really great administrative team. I think, you know, they've already started to click as a unit. They're already talking. I know, you know, middle and high school are already talking about what are going to be the, you know, the lines in the sands, we're going to be our non-negotiables as we go into the year and want to have those, have those all spelled out. Obviously, you know, middle school, when you're approaching, how you approach a sixth grader, how you approach a 12th grader might be a little bit different. And middle school students and teachers need different things. But we want to have that consistency so that, you know, for student, when a student comes into us in sixth grade and stays through it with us through 12th grade, they know what the expectations are. We raise them as they go and what that looks like and the responsibilities that come with it. And the privileges that come with it go up. But they know what it means to be a Sachem. They know what it means to be a part of our community. And our older students model for our younger students what we expect. So really excited about this team. Great group of educators with just a mix of experience, and I think it's going to be great.
Excellent. Yeah, that's what I was going to say as well, is just as long as the teachers and the staff feel 100% supported too. Because we've had, you know, lack of, and less.
Yeah, I mean, the staff, staff is, you know, staff is going to be supported and staff is going to be, you know, is going to be accountable. So, you know, we're, we're going to go in there and make sure that we have the expectations clearly spelled out for everyone, students, staff, and then hold everyone to the standard at the beginning. You know, there's always an adjustment as people, but once everyone's on board. on board and understands what we're doing, we'll continue to move forward and make progress.
Sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you for, I'm sorry, were you?
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for all your work on this, Dr. Scuzzarella also, and welcome. The thing that you mentioned as well, looking forward to hearing about, is that push on homework into the next year.
Yeah.
Obviously very important, so thank you for mentioning that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, how much is it, the FY '25, the 2024-2025 student handbook for the Saugus Middle High School.
Chair seconds, can we do a roll?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercoole?
Yes.
And Mr. Serino? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the elementary school student handbook?
Mr. Chairman, I'll stop that, and if there's any specifics, we have a new assistant principal from Belmonte here, in case there's any specific questions, but basically, what we did with the, we, they took a long time last year to refine the elementary school handbook, to merge the two buildings to have the same handbook. All they did since my administrative summit that we had in June was they basically changed the things that changed this year. Other than that, there's no, no other changes, so there's really nothing to report, the only differences would be which administrators' names, the new, you know, the new calendar, there's no, there's, other than that, there's nothing new to this.
So, in, in...
Yep.
Going back to what Mr. Sullivan said, so is the implementation, that's, that's the important piece.
Correct. And that's going to be the focus, that's going to be the focus of all of our schools, is that there, and we've already had this conversation with, with central and building administrators, and it will happen again in August, where we have the policies in place, yes, some may be changed, and that's, that's fine too, but the policies and the procedures and the rules that are in place will be followed, students, staff, everybody will be held accountable.
Excellent. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just, you know, I hear it from this board, and I'm glad that you just said that, Mr. Superintendent. I think, you know, with all the hard work that has been done with these handbooks, and it, it looks absolutely amazing on, on both fronts, I think accountability is a key, and I think that's what we've all been wanting and looking for. I think this gives everybody the framework to be able to do that, and I think it'll help promote a better, more inclusive culture with that accountability.
Message has been received.
So we have the elementary school student handbook, 24-25.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, can we do a roll?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercoole?
Yes.
Mr. Serino?
Yes. Moving to the approval of donations and gifts, we have a grant for One Eight Foundation, combined Jewish philanthropies, to Saugus Middle School, Open Science Ed for $8,480.
Make a motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a gift from the American Heart Association to the Belmonte STEM, and $350 for Kids' Heart Challenge. What is that?
They do that every year, if you, if you're in the, if you're in the Belmonte, you'll see that, the banners that are all along what I think is the girls' locker room, that's, they do it every year, there was originally a jump rope challenge, and now it's a Healthy Heart Challenge that they all participate in.
Okay, excellent.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A gift from Vision Inc., the old Dune Business airs O'Connor Studios, to the Belmonte STEM, for $1,777.90.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Gift from Legacy Studios for $2,243.70. The funds go to help support the senior yearbook.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, this one really gets me, we're getting a gift from the Special Olympics. Charity has no end.
Nope.
Gift from the Special Olympics of Massachusetts of 500, to help support our Unified Athletes' Basketball and Strength and Conditioning Program at the high school.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
I feel like we got to make a donation back to Special Olympics. Another gift from Legacy Studios for $1,214.50. The funds go to help support the middle school memory book.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we know what the memory, what is the memory book?
It's their version.
Yeah, okay. Public comment. Before we wrap up, I just want to thank Mr. Sullivan, Dr. Scuzzarella, everyone who's here tonight, you guys, like, I, this is, this is, I don't think people at home understand. So the teachers go home for the summer, the administrators start their work in the summer, and you guys, I come by and your cars are here early and late, and, you know, welcome to the Belmonte Steam Academy, you're going to be unbelievable. I just want to say thank you, and it truly doesn't go unnoticed up here, what you guys do, so again, thank you, so, having no public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, even though we're adjourned, well, these are going to be on the website, right?